Good evening. We are so glad that you're here tonight. We are a portion of the Missouri Public Charter School Commission. That's a commission appointed by the governor. It's one of several different sponsoring organizations. And probably we have, what, eleven schools? Yeah, close to one or two. So, we're glad you're here tonight. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will, by the call, I will have the commission members introduce themselves to you in just a minute. And then we'll start hearing the public testimony. So, Robin, hold on.
Delbert Scott.
I'm here.
Kathy Loy. Peggy Taylor. Here. And Mary Jane Almandos. Here. And that's your committee members.
We have a forum. Maybe not a quarrel, but a forum. So, the purpose of our meeting tonight is Gateway is up for renewal of their charter. And we're going to take public hearing. And given information about plans for the future. We want to hear from the public. And later on, we will hear from the board and have a conversation with them. So, if you want to start off and give us your spiel.
Sure.
Where you're going. And thank you for coming. Thank you.
I think I don't need this. You hear me, right? Okay, it's good. So, it's easier. Hi. Personally, welcome. Welcome to our hearing. It's a great excitement and great to have you here today. My, I would like to, I came my first slide last minute. So, this is, this is a design that I like about the 10th year celebration. It's designed by the parent group, is that right? Athletics Association. And they start, they start creating this threadwear with this logo. Celebrating 10 years of excellence. So, that's the slide that I would start with. Alright, welcome. Let's get to it. Very quick. Gateway Science Academy, sponsored by Missouri Charter Public School Commission. Thanks for being here today. Glad to have you. And managed by concept schools, charter management organizations, and non-profit organizations, and third-line schools in Midwest area. Of course, number one, I always start with the mission statement. Is to provide quality education with an emphasis on science, mathematics, technology, while balancing all core subjects. So, the second piece over here, balancing all core subjects, edited like about a few years ago by the Board of Directors. Because like, hey, we are STEM school, but like, we provide all, like a great quality of music program, art program, and others. So, then we said, okay, hey, let's add this statement. So, that's a great addition. We try to create an atmosphere that provides students, parents, and teachers opportunities for continuous growth, enabling them to reach their highest potential. Just, that's a basic information, charter one-on-one, but just a greater reminder, the public charter school, we always say "public" first and highlight it. Open to all students, do not charge tuition, and have no enrollment requirement. Run by its board, on Board of Directors. And sponsored by Missouri Commission Charter School Commission, and managed by concept schools. 1920 stats. Very quick, again, we opened our door in 2010. And we had, we had a long story about it. I'm not going to go into that. But it was first year, about 330 students. It was K7 at that time. So, we ended the grading year, and we reached K12 in our sixth year. And had first graduates in that year. Current serving 1,497 students in three campuses. Technically, Desi recognizes us as four campus, four campus districts. Separated middle and high school, recognize them as a separate building. So, we have 422 students in Smiley Campus, K5. South Campus, this campus is 1,443 students. Firewood Campus, we have 632, 612 students. Our free reduced slant percentage is 48.2%. We have 8% of student special needs and 12% ELA population. Right. And one of the things that I would like to mention about is, is that charter public school, we have, we have our own education plan program. And we offer unique opportunities to our students. That's to me, an important part that I would like to touch on. And the number one to me is that the education model, the concept schools education model is designed to meet the needs of all students. So, and the spectrum is so wide. We have students, when we enroll students, they can be behind grade level or advanced level. And our program is to design and meet the needs of all students. So, we provide support services for the students who are struggling. And also, we provide advanced-level programs to students who are at high level. While we do this, I think the next slide I checked about was, we have individualized approach in terms of, in terms of keeping track of students' data and their achievement. And also, we offer after-school programs, Saturday schools, Saturday programs, in addition to regular instruction we have throughout the year. And when we talk about the regular instruction, our calendar, total number of hours of instruction is 15% higher than Desi's required number of hours, which is 1,044 hours. Our instruction time is 15% more than it, in our calendar, regular school year calendar. And another thing I would like to mention about a high school program, we have higher standards, graduation standards. The, we have, our kids are required to have 28 credits in order to graduate from our high school, opposed to 24 credits in, again, the Desi's requirements. And one of the programs that I would speak proudly about is the college guidance program. It's an individualized, we have, we spend one-on-one attention, provide one-on-one service to every single high schooler, to guide them, their high school years, and their college acceptances. Of course, the most important part is to talk about the student achievement. I put a few charts, there are so many different charts that we can present. But the data, the charts I have presenting to you today is from Department of Education's website. So, there are two areas here from the math assessment, state assessment. The first one, first chart is English proficiency in third grade. So, I don't know how well you see from here, I'm going to do my best to give you the numbers. 2018, I'm going to just talk about last year. Our proficiency rate, our proficiency rate in third grade ELA is 55.4%, where the state, state average is 48.7%. Comparing to San Luis Public School, it's 19.1%. And same thing for mathematics, seventh grade. We have 48.1% student proficient in seventh grade mathematics. Compared to state where 38% is 10% lower. And the San Luis Public School is at 12.7%. So, these are the proficiency comparison for third grade ELA and seventh grade math. When we do this comparison for all grades and subjects, it's pretty much at state level, either a little higher than state or a little lower than the state. So, that's where we are in terms of the student achievement, the proficient and advanced achievement for, for the math state assessment. And the second one is talking about the, the chart is about the graduation rate. Again, the first chart, there are three-year comparisons over there. Again, I'm just going to stick on 2019, the last year. It is, ours is four-year cohort graduation is at 100%, where the state average is 89.4, 64%, 90%. And the San Luis Public School is at 73%. When we talk about college readiness, to me, one of the most reliable criteria is the ACT. The ACT, 100% of Gateway students, the seniors and juniors are taking the ACT assessment. Regardless, they may take different assessments too, but we require them to take ACT. For the 100% ACT participation, the average score for 2019 is 22.1, which is exceeding the state and the national average of the ACT composite score. When we talk about ACT, my next slide that I would like to mention, talk about, if the clicker helps me, one place gone, whatever. Okay. I provided the stats for grade 18, class of 2019. So, we have 100% college acceptance rate. Their average ACT is 22.1, as I just mentioned. Forty-three out of 53 students, we had 53 students graduated last year. Out of 53, 43 of them took AP or dual-credit classes. And in total, they are 453 college credits. They are offered cumulative of 5.5 million scholarships. There are seven full bright flight scholarships, requires 31-plus ACT. And 25 of them received A-plus scholarships. It also has some requirements such as minimum 2.5 GPA. Or having 50 hours of tutoring to the younger students. And there are some like list of criterias to satisfy the requirements. So, that's the class of 2019. We had four grade 18 class, and others are not, not different than this. One other thing I would like to mention, our high school programs fairly new. Okay, the first years were about three, four years ago. And the trend we see about high school programs is that the results are increasing every year. And when we look at the high school rankings at the US News, US Best High School News list, Gateway is making, climbing up every year. So, we are hoping to make another big jump for next year, which their report comes from one or two years behind. So, that they look at the, like, I think one year, 2018, they will have 2017 results. But we are going to climb up in that report. And when we also look at other criterias, other, other size trends, the high schools, high schools, Gateway is a big trend, increasing trend. Few things, again, student achievement programs. I think robotics program is one of the unique programs that we offer. Yes, some other schools offer robotics too, but we are guessing. Our students participate, starting from this group, these fifth graders, you met this group today, all girls, the first time. They start in fifth grade and all the way through high school. Since, they are the, they started this year first time, the BEX IQ. We were going FLL FTC route, this is a different route for robotics program. And first year, first competition, they got the first place, all three teams actually, that's first three spots. And then they are qualified to state championships. They are even invited to one other larger-scale world championship, right after, right after their first competition. And middle high school, we have FTC program that they were qualified to world championship last year at Texas Houston. The thing I was a little bit upset about it was, the world championship has been in San Luis for years. The first year in Texas, they are qualified. Then I had to deal with transportation, accommodation, all of this. So, they know, you know, when to participate. So, another, another thing is, it's kind of like very new. And it was new to me too. One day, I walked into the computer room, and I saw a little bucket, and I said, gosh, the ceiling is, again, you know, there's a leak. But the teacher said, no, this is, this bucket is for our underwater robotics. So, they, they were testing their robots in that bucket. I said, are you serious? So, they started underwater robotics program that year. And from that bucket, they even made it to the world championship. It was at Chicago University first year, and then Texas, and then Georgia that year. So, that's, that's something that was not well-known program overall. That's kind of like a new branch of robotics, underwater. But we are into that too, that it's on a different season. So, two years in a row, they made it to the world championship for underwater robotics. We have another unique program called Elite Math. So, students start from third grade, and enrolled into the special math program, based on, based on their, based on their achievement level. And the goal for this work is just going high level, having high level of math. And by end of middle school year, they finish the high school program. So, and they are also forming our math teams. They participate, the Neolithic Math Competition, Math League, Math Con, AMC, and Math Concepts doubled over there. So, and Math Con is the concept schools math competition. And they also qualified to nationwide, national competition at the national level last year. Several students advanced to the national level. So, this is pretty much all about the achievements, not just what I would like to mention. There are a lot more, but let me stop there. Respect to the time, I have, I have my time, four minutes. Next five years. We're talking about another term, another charter term, another five years. We're excited about it. And of course, last year, we went through the review process, third-party quality school review process, and then we looked at our practices. And we talked about, in the community, we talked about how we can improve. Still, just get this from good to great. And then, of course, increasing student achievement is always number one. Regardless of where we are, there's always room for improvement. And we put it on top of our priority list. And our number one goal we talked about is reducing the number of students who are at below basic level. We don't accept that, that should not be in the student there. And move them up. Also, also help our students to become proficient or advanced. And we talked in details about it, we talked about our intervention program. Unified our, created a unified district intervention program this year. And then, we tied all of this effort into the goals for next five years. So, NPI score is a score that comes with the state assessment. And we had five-year NPI goal with the, with this renewal process. And another part is Gateway Science Academy, we are Science Academy. We, we said like, hey, okay, we have to also talk about science. And we've been working on this too for last two years. But we said, okay, we better show progress in our results too. And we talked about strengthening the implementation of science programs and accomplishing higher student achievement on our list. And we created a program, a plan to improve in our science program too. So, that was another emphasis that we had in our plan. Also, the finance, of course, we have to be in a good financial condition in order to accomplish our goals. This is one of the chapters I would like to mention. It shows the, again, from Desi's side, this expenditure per ADA, per student. The first chart shows, let's take a look at 2018, $10,000 per child. That's the current expenditure per child for PSA. Compared to state average is $11,300. And this is one of the things that we keep getting messages about funding equity. We need your support on that. But that's the difference right there. And also, the chart on the right shows about like, how much the San Luis Public School spends is 15.6K. Big difference. And our goal for next five years is to have cash reserve. It is two months cash reserve in next two years, and then increase it to three months for the rest, to make sure that we have solid financials for the future of PSA. And my last slide is about enrollment projection. So, over the years, first few years, we made an exponential growth in our, in our population. But later on, it became a kind of like a natural growth by getting the elementary schools at full capacity. So, in next five years, today, we are exposed 1,500. And in next five years, we're going to increase the number to 1,750. So, it's another 250 more students over the next five years. So, that would not be a huge growth, but it's just about like having more students in elementary schools, middle high school. And upper levels, we have less students graduating. But that's kind of like the growth that we are having. And I know there are firewood middle high school folks here. I know you're so excited about getting the new building, new wing. Now, it's almost there, and we looked at it. But hopefully, hopefully, no, I'm not going to give dates. I failed all the time by now, so I'm not going to, I have a promise. Okay, that's expression. Thank you, that's all I would like to mention, and give my thanks to you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I don't think this is long yet. I'll try to talk loud, is that alright? Hello? It's very technical. Hello? Our purpose of being here today is to see what Gateway is doing. And then to talk to kids, talk to staff, talk to parents and workers. And we've met a lot of your kids today, two of the schools. And we're impressed. But I really got the inside scoop here, because I had to wait about 15 minutes in the lounge with a young fifth grader who was waiting for his mother to pick him up. So, I got to pick him up, okay? And he intends to be in the system until he gets out. He'd be happy. So, I got the real inside scoop. I do want you to know who the commissioners are and where they're from. So, I want to get the mic to them, just tell us the name, where you're from, and why you're here.
I'm Kathy Jo Loy, and I live in the southwest part of the state in Joplin. And I just got passionate about seeing some changes to our public school down in Joplin. And this journey led me here, and I'm excited when I see what's going on in St. Louis Charter Schools.
Good evening, I'm Peggy Taylor, and I'm from Nixa, Missouri, which is seven miles south of Springfield and 30 minutes north of Branson. So, let me give you an idea, one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state. I served for 30 years on our local school board and am a former officer of the Missouri School Board Association. When I was nominated by the association and appointed by the governor's office, I realized my passion for children was not over when I retired from Nisa. So, I am finding a new world and realizing the importance of school choice, whether it be in Kansas City or St. Louis. And the parents I have met, the staff I have met, and the students I have visited with reaffirms why I'm doing this, and I'm thankful.
My name is Mary Jane Almandos, I'm from Cape Girardeau, originally from California, where I was involved in charter schools for the past 17 years. I was a teacher, I was on school boards. And I just can't stop getting excited about charter schools. So, here I am, now I'm excited about Missouri Charter Schools. And to see all of you in here, I can see you're excited too, and it's a good thing. And this is going to be what's the best thing for our, for our city, for our state, for our children. So, thank you for all being here.
You probably already know our executive director, Robin Womby, who has lived all her life in the city, and worked for Mayor Slay as his charter prosecutor for a long time. And we hired her when we first started the commission, five or six years ago, four, five years ago. And we are blessed to have Robin and her energy and vision with us. And my name is Delbert Scott, I'm the chair of this commission, because some other people were in ticket. I served for 26 years in Missouri Legislature, 18 of the House Representatives, and eight of the Senate. And I'm in the Big Town, 400, that's what it count, 4,000, 400. And it's a real pleasure to serve, and with this great staff. We have people from all over the state. There are nine rooms, there are nine slots altogether. We have all been appointed, but they are appointed and then confirmed by the Senate. And so, that's why we're here, and we're excited about what you're doing. And we want to hear your thoughts and input. And that's what this part of the hearing is tonight. So, if you have, if you want to make a statement, which we hope you will, if you would tell us your name and your relationship, you're a parent, teacher, whatever interest you have, and then whatever you want us to hear, we invite you to do that. And I think what we'll do, if you'll just raise your hand, and you can speak from where you're at, and you can stand up if you'd like to, if you want everybody to hear it. We'll get a microphone to you.
And if we can give us the...
Can you hear the laugh?
Yes.
I think you got it turned off. You raise your hand, and it works the microphone.
That'll be really quick. So, I was at the very beginning, when Robin worked at the mayor's office. And this, I could, even maybe by showing hands, if people were able to laugh, the neighborhood? Oh, Joe Carroll, I'm the alderman of the 2031.
Don't forget that name, right?
We started that at the Epiphany campus. And we had, not only, and I'm going to be very brief, but not only did the school was shutting down Epiphany, and kids were getting scared. The church was going to be celebrating its 100 year in business at Epiphany, which it would have never did, because they were having a lot of financial difficulties. And so, this particular charter in Epiphany actually saved that parish. And very popular that parish. Saint Joe of Newark got a little upset with me, but they got over it, because their kids all wanted to get, where were they at? So, it's a great school, it was started a lot, a lot at the very beginning, because we were only open one week before school was started, and kids were already enrolled everywhere else. So, a lot of firemen and policemen actually got, and we called the units and said, you know, these guys want to erase, we have a school. So, it was mostly started by firemen, policemen, and city workers. What I have noticed is, at least I can tell you from Miami, the part of the city, the housing values have gone up tremendously. People are not leaving, in fact. The main reason people tell me they're staying is because they wanted a neighborhood school. The promises I made at Epiphany, which Robin had to help me through to a point, was I said, we're going to do just zip codes, we got a lot of these zip codes to go. We got in trouble. But Robin came back and said, well, you can prep with zip codes, you can save these zip codes. So, we did, so we spoke to them, zip code. We got a lot of trouble from St. James, which is now going under, because they called the American Civil Protection Bureau and tried everything they could to stop us. But they couldn't stop it, because we have so many great parents. When you get 14, 15 hundred students, we got over 3,000 parents, then you got grandparents that need. So, I just wanted, before I cut out, to get to the places to be, I wanted to thank everybody, the parents, that really had made this a success. The first couple of years, I was kind of looking at the babysitter. Now, I, I know, I'm not even very active, because they do such a great job. They kind of threw me out. We actually, at the beginning of our charter, we actually 60 Minutes came in every class. And I don't know if Robin remembers that or not, but everybody tried to beat us up. They tried to say everything nasty they could say, not only about me, but about this charter, about charter schools. And again, you bad myself. But it was a bunch of garbage, and we proved it. And I think we're the greatest, Robin thinks, apparently we can be fired, but we're good. We got great parents, and I just want to say, God bless, thank you all. And I hit the dugout, but thank you all for being in the part of this. Mr. Charlie, and Mr. Blackstone and all of them, that every time I did it, if I got to complain about anybody, I called them, they said, Joe, okay, we'll go to one. And we went to some of the coolest places. We went to a place on Grand, where you eat on the table. on the table, it's a big copper table, and they serve the food, not on plates, but on the table. So I'm learning a lot. Anyway, I'm gonna go, but God bless you guys, thank you so much, and thank you for listening.
All right, who's next? Just raise your hand.
I don't need a microphone. I use my teacher voice. My name is Megan Piper, and I am a fifth grade teacher here in South. This is my sixth year here and my thirteenth year teaching in the state of Missouri. I came from the failing school district that the state took over. But overall, more important than that, I am a St. Louis city resident, born and raised, I have not left. My parents were city employees. For those of you who don't know the rule about city employees, you must live in the city of St. Louis to keep your employment. My parents had no choice, the choice was St. Louis Public or Catholic. Catholic schools are now extinct. We lived paycheck to paycheck, so I could go to Catholic school, because St. Louis Public schools were failing. Our kids need free, quality education. That's what GSA does, all three campuses. Our kids shouldn't get punished because they live in the city. That's not fair to our kids. Thank you.
All right, my name is Robin Gunn, I work on some things, but I won't pull it all up, but I do remember anything. So, I am an employee and a parent. When given the chance to speak about GSA, I jumped as fast as I could to talk about this amazing school district. My journey with GSA started about five years ago, I was completing my school council graduate work at Marine Corps, and at that time, we were the sponsor school. So, through my school council chair, I got the opportunity to work with the school counselor, Ms. Sellers, at Kyler, and I was completely blown away. I felt the staff, I felt the atmosphere, so as it encouraged me to do my school counseling internship, I did it at Kyler. And working with Matt, and Dr. Shick, and Ms. Sellers, and incredible students, and a hundred percent college acceptance rate, and millions, multimillion dollars scholarships every single year for the small school that it is, I mean, what school can say that? I absolutely don't know that. I got the opportunity during that time to meet Ms. Gilliam. My son at the time was at a different city charter school, so I can tell you firsthand, they are not all the same people, we're talking about the amazing GSA today. I got to meet Ms. Gilliam, and I said, my kid has to go to GSA, frankly, she has no choice. So that fall, he started here at South in second grade, he's now in third grade. It gets me emotional, because the opportunities that he's been given here, I don't think he would have ever gotten at another school. He's in the math, he does junior legal, law, or vice, he's been asked to do the math con competitions, I mean, excelling and soaring beyond my wildest dreams. And he's obviously a science tech kid. But this isn't just a school for science tech kids. My daughter just started here in kindergarten, she's been nurtured, excelling, and that's the point of GSA, no matter your abilities, your strengths, your interests, you're going to get nurtured, going to get a good education. Years ago, when my husband and I decided to raise our family in the city, meaning we had really difficult choice to make education wise. And our friends would say, oh my God, you live in the city, where are you gonna send your kids to school? And we were like, okay, well, but that's, that's the thing, that's the whole reputation that this city has had. And as parents, we deserve, we need, it's crucial to have a choice to send our children to different schools, to give them a quality education. So now, when people ask that, I say, they go to GSA, I'm a proud parent and supporter. I work as a school counselor, and she's saying, that was the part I didn't say, that's why I have my sheet. So, last year, I got, beginning of this year, I got the opportunity to apply for a school council position at Smiley, that's what I'm involved in. And so, again, that brought me in the direction to further involve in GSA. So, I'm a school counselor at Smiley, I'm in South, I'm so connected with Kyler, and I just couldn't be more pleased and proud, and I will do everything that I can to continue that this choice exists for parents for a very, very long time.
So, somebody will hear your question.
I don't need that. I hate public speaking, but I love the school. I've been, I'm a parent.
And what is your name?
My name is Nicole. I originally started at Smiley in two thousand and eleven, so second year it was open. My daughter is now a mean writer at Kyler. My youngest one will actually start Smiley next year. And she right now goes to a city public school. And I can't keep her there, I love GSA. We are family, whether whoever it is, we are this big gigantic family of three campuses, and we all work together, we all do things for each other, and, I mean, I don't know what else to say besides that we all have each other's back. And this is why we are all here, to have their back, so we can continue this and expand it even bigger than it's ever been. My kid will graduate, my kindergartner next year will graduate. I won't leave another school, I'm not gonna lie to you, if something would ever happen, I will move to the county, because I refuse to send my kid to a public school. I've lived in the city all my life. I am thirty-eight years old, I know the city schools, I couldn't do it no possible way. So, please, keep this family as big as it is and not much bigger, because we're here to exceed.
Very good.
My name's Ellen Dixon, I have two children at GSA Smiley campus, third grade--